Time is 7:13 PM. It is Tuesday, August 18th. And I'm going to call this regularly scheduled city council meeting to order. Councilor Sheil is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
The flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands.
For which it stands. One nation, under God. All right. Okay, would the city secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Coach?
Here.
Ellison?
President.
Sheil?
Here.
Rizzo?
Councilmember Rizzo is on the wrong link, so let me go help him.
Villalobos? Tobias?
Here.
Okay, seven members present. We have a quorum. Next up, approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city council's special meeting minutes from August 1st, 2020, the city council's special meeting minutes from August 4th, 2020, and the city council meeting minutes, August 4th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Sheil, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, that we approve the meeting minutes for August 1st, 4th, and 4th. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Seven to zero. Next up, citizen comments period. Do we have anyone scheduled and/or on the line? Jennifer, Samantha?
There's no one logged into the meeting.
Okay. Is there anyone there, Tracy?
No.
No.
Okay. All right. With that, if there are no objections, I'm going to close citizen comments period. It's now closed. Next up, agenda item number five. Public hearings. Conduct a public hearing on the city's proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021, as amended by city council on August 1st, 2020, totaling approximately $134.2 million for all city funds, including a tax rate of .5201 per $100 of assessed valuation, a 10% increase in water service rates, a 10% increase in wastewater service rates, no change in storm drainage fees, a 2.5% increase in solid waste service charges, trash collection per contract terms, limited changes in other fees and charges, and the addition of 22 new full-time positions for a total of 279 full-time equivalent positions. This is a public hearing, so it's not required presentation. Scott, do you have anything to say before I open it up?
Mayor, the only addition would be that on the regular agenda, under Consider Possible Action, there will be first reading of the ordinance for both the budget and tax rate, and then the second reading will be at a special meeting next week on August 25th.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone registered to speak? I don't believe we have anyone in City Hall, so. But if there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. It is now open. If no one is signed up for or interested in speaking on our budget, then we will close the public hearing. Seeing no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close it. Public hearing is now closed. All right, next up, agenda item number six, public hearings. Conduct a public hearing to obtain comments on the proposal to set the city's average tax rate at .5201 per $100 of assessed valuation for tax year 2020, fiscal year 2020, 2021. Same song. Anything to add, Mr. Sellers?
No, sir.
Okay.
Councilmember Rizzo, I missed the first part of the public hearing. This is just for the public, five and six, or can councilmembers comment on this? Sorry, I jumped in late.
It's a public hearing, right? This is not the budget discussion yet. That comes later in the agenda. This is just a public hearing.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I jumped in late. I'm a little frazzled. Thank you.
No worries.
As part of the public hearing, this is item number six. We do have a prepared statement that will be read by the city secretary.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. It is now open. Go ahead, Jennifer.
This is the first of two public hearings scheduled on the city's proposed property tax rate for fiscal year 2020, 2021. The second public hearing will be held at 7:00 PM on August 25th, 2020, at Kyle City Hall, 100 West Center Street, Kyle, Texas, 78640. The city's property tax rate for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 are as follows. No new revenue tax rate, .5292 per 100, voter approval tax rate, .5202 per 100, proposed tax rate, .5201 per 100. City council is scheduled to consider a proposal to set the property tax rate at .5201 per $100 of assessed taxable valuation for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. The proposed property tax rate of 0.5201 per $100 is 0.0215, or 3.97% below the city's current tax rate of 0.5416 per $100. The city's proposed tax rate of 0.5201 per $100 is also below the no new revenue tax rate of 0.5292 per $100, and the voter approval tax rate of 0.5202 per $100 for fiscal year 2020 to 2021. The Kyle City Council is scheduled to vote on the property tax rate later in this meeting, first reading of city ordinance, and at 7:00 PM on August 25th, 2020, second reading of city ordinance. All Kyle taxpayers, residents, and members of the public are invited to attend and express their views at the public hearings and city council meetings scheduled on the city's proposed property tax rates.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Now we have the public hearing open. Is there anyone who wishes to come and speak? Still no one there? No one online? Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to close the public hearing. It is now closed. Next up, agenda item number seven, National Fajita Day proclamation. As this council is aware, we have a very special member of Kyle's history in Mr. Sonny Falcone, and it just so happens that today at this regularly scheduled council meeting, we have the opportunity to take care of some city business and also celebrate the fajita. So I saw a photo of Councilmember Rizzo earlier posted online of him grubbing down on some fajitas. I noticed that our communications department has done a really good job of promoting the history of the fajita, in particular, the roots of the fajita in Kyle, Texas, how Kyle has a particular claim. And so if there are no objections, I'm going to read the proclamation right now, and then we'll let others comment. So here's the proclamation. "City of Kyle mayoral proclamation. Whereas National Fajita Day is celebrated annually on August 18th, and whereas National Fajita Day recognizes the sizzling deliciousness of the savory Tex-Mex flavor found in fajitas, and whereas National Fajita Day will be held in memory and recognition of fajita founder and friend of Kyle, Sonny Falcone, and whereas the reasons for fajitas and the various styles and savory flavors of fajitas are representative of the diversity and uniqueness found within the city of Kyle's residents, visitors, and businesses, and whereas we acknowledge and appreciate in September 1969 that Sonny Falcone, an Austin meat market manager, operated the first commercial fajita taco concession stand at a rural DSCS celebration in Kyle, Texas, whereas the city of Kyle will forever be known and recognized as home of the great fajita. Now therefore I, Travis Mitchell, by virtue of the authority vested me as mayor, on behalf of Kyle, Texas, do hereby proclaim August 18th, 2020, as Fajita Day, and call upon the people of Kyle to celebrate this great addition to the food we eat in the spirit of tradition and enjoyment that it offers and allow for us to remember the fajita founder, Sonny Falcone's delicious contribution." That's the proclamation. We've really been doing our best at the city of Kyle to try to help uncover and resurrect the fajita. This proclamation fits right in line, I think, with our culture and our values. So thank you to Jennifer and Carlo for writing that. I know the two of them in particular spent some time working on that proclamation, so thank you for that. And anybody on council have anything you want to add?
Councilmember Rizzo, I just want to say that the birthplace of fajita commercially was Kyle, Texas, but thanks to that, I can get a good fajita up here in Gillette, Wyoming. So it's been really great. They did a pretty good job. Must say pretty good because Texas is still number one in the fajita, but especially Kyle, Texas. But I can tell you, it was a pretty good dinner, and I enjoyed it. But I can tell you that this is a part of our history in our city, and to really look back at what Kyle is and the many cultures that make up of Kyle is a great how would I say, it's a great legacy that we leave for everybody else that, you know, Kyle welcomes everyone, and we really encourage our legacy, whether it was the Hispanic, early Anglo-Americans, whoever it was that came into Kyle to make Kyle. I think our diversity is shown through everything that we are that makes up Kyle, and the fajita is something that makes up Kyle. So I just want to say thank you for the proclamation, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Councilman Tobias. Thank you for bringing this forward. And as Councilman Rizzo says, it goes back to a rich history that we have in Kyle. I know growing up here and attending the DCC celebrations at St. Anthony's and seeing all the cook-offs and barbecues that were going on during that time, and having Sonny Falcone's fajita out there, I'd see his booth out there, and it just brings back a lot of good memories of when the community was small and coming together on that end. And so I just wanted to say thank you for bringing this forward. I really appreciate it.
Appreciate you, too. It's been interesting reading some of the comments on some of the posts, on Samantha's posts today. You know, in particular, there's some folks who really, really do remember when the city of Kyle probably, you know, just did a better job of championing the fajita and the culture established and promoted here by Mr. Falcone. And I'm grateful that this council is looking to resurrect what really is a gem of a piece of history in the city of Kyle. I look forward to seeing how, over time, our identity as the birthplace of the fajita, also as addition to being the high capital of Texas, begins to take shape. And I know that it's not something that we can force on folks. It's not even something we necessarily should be trying to, but rather just allowing our own values to be reflected in the way that we set up our council meetings and spend our funds and doing what we can as a city to promote that diversity and that culture and that rich Kyle history. So I'm extremely proud of the way this council has been galvanizing behind important pieces of Kyle history. It makes me happy to call each and every one of your colleagues. With that, I'm going to move on unless anyone else has anything to say. All right. Next up, CIP road projects and consent agenda presentation.
Good evening, council. Mayor Leon Barba, city engineer. Here's our current update on CIP and road projects. Planning the road, as you know, is open now. We're 91% complete, but we expect that number to jump up pretty quickly when we get the next pay estimate in. There's still some additional items that need to be wrapped up and cleaned up, but we're thinking we can wrap up all the paperwork sometime around the end of September, sometime in that timeframe as we start wrapping up our last pay estimate. Burleson Street, we're about 83% based on the last estimate. Right now, they're doing their paving and concrete work between Rodriguez and the roundabout. The illumination, future traffic signal foundation, progress. It's Spring Ranch, so there's still work in that area. Of course, a water line is in service after track, and we're still going to try to make this, end of this August, to complete this project. The contractor has places first left to mix in, and again, he's putting his forms where I went by his state, so lots of forms being set up. So hopefully, once he gets all his forms set up, he's got two more layers to put in there to get that road opened up. One thing I still understand is going to be the, of course, the median that we need to put in for the new Pacific Quiad Zone. And that's a different style of curve, so that's why it's a lot of handwork in the area. We talked to the contractor at length today, a number of times, with the project manager and I did. We tried to look at different ways we could reduce maybe some of the discovered work so we can ensure you could get out of here as quickly as possible. We looked at a number of different things, and we talked to him about those different things. His one big concern is that if he does make his date, then he's hesitant to turn traffic loose on the street. And the reasoning is, he may have work to do behind the curve, such as sidewalk, and you'll have your concrete trucks coming in. He just doesn't want them turning that fresh pavement with the twisting and turning wheels that they do as they navigate across the area, putting in the sidewalk and that kind of thing. So we'll just have to see where we land on that portion of the contract. But it's doable, and we're just trying to encourage him to do everything he can to get that done by the end of the day. So we did talk to him quite a bit today about that. Outside, we're still basically doing the same thing. We still have three crews working on the site. And so we have one crew at the station, one crew at the airport works wrapping up that project there, and then our third crew aboard. Treatment plan expansion, great project, so far so good. We're done with the wellness project. We did our first major project four on 811, that's where he is at Houston. We had started at 4:00 in the morning, 120 yards. Residents were notified. We did notify the HOA, and we have our new sign on the park trail to kind of let people know what's going on. That hole you see there is about 45 feet deep, so we had lights on and everything, but it's kind of hard to hear a lot of that lighting issues. Just to show you overall what's going on with the project. To your left is the park trail, and to your left is that area where the ed works is being worked on today. And again, that's 5 feet deep in that area. That's a pretty major improvement in that area. This is another shot of that same location. We were using their city's drone to get some of these pictures, and we did make sure we were not interfering with contractors. We did it after hours to let everybody know. So we're getting some really great pictures by using the drone and taking advantage of that, so we get you some really decent pictures. This is the last one. This is kind of, oops, that's kind of an overview of the project. There's your aeration basins, your clarifiers, the rubber digesters, the footprints. On the right, that material that you see there, that's all pipe that goes into this project, so. It's a large project. And that road that you see there is the one that goes back to Hyde and Wright. I didn't hear. Let me do it more. Consent agenda item number 11, interlocal agreement with Hays County. Really, the only thing we have involved in this is that we would, they're working in the city limits, so this is why we had to do the interlocal with Hays County, so they would have the approval to work on this section of the roadway. This is a section of the road, it's two lanes, right around New Bridge back to Water Leaf and Boulevard. You probably noticed that there's a really neck down there in that area, especially that one culvert where that guardrail keeps getting hit every few weeks or months. I don't know how many times it's been. The county's paying for everything. Unless we want something done there, then they're going to be picking up the toll bill for this. It'll be a typical waiver text off project, and I couldn't get a day as to when they were going to start, but if I get that, I'll pass that on to you. That's the last of my presentation.
Leon, Councilmember Rizzo, just going back to that 150 project, I'm just wondering if there's any intersections that we're looking at in that area that might need light future that we could be able to maybe look forward and maybe put some infrastructure? Is there anything in that area where you think we might need some infrastructure done while they're turning it up?
Councilmember, I don't recall of any major intersections in that area. I can check and see what it is. And then the only thing, a text top told me that if we try to make any changes, that was later, they're bid opening, so. You know, that's the draw yet, so. But let me check.
Well, Leon, actually, I can answer that question. There is no major intersection. New Bridge is the one intersection, and the next intersection is Water Leaf. Where it ended up not having that third turn lane is right there over a low-water, kind of creaky crossing, and so it has a little bridge to it. But other than that, there's no major intersection at all there.
And I think what I'm getting at, alluding at here on this, Leon, is that I'm thinking about future traffic on 150, people exiting out of Water Leaf, the Woodlands. I don't know if that's close to it, the Woodlands right there. I think it's pretty close. Just wondering, go some division in that area. Is there anything in that area that we see that the traffic, future traffic, would be cause for concern of having a light there later? I'm thinking long-term, since they're going to do the construction there, I'm thinking, is there anything we need to lay down structurally for later?
And Councilmember, I can also expand on that. Both intersections, New Bridge and Water Leaf, both have controlled lighting already installed and working.
In that area?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. My other question, Leon, is back to Burleson. Just looks like a lot of progress has been done. I'm still ready for the completion date to be. I'm hoping the end of August, but I know there's some sidewalks to be in, and I'm all for the sidewalks that need to be installed. So I give a little leeway, but I really want this project completed. And one reason why is that most of the citizens that live in this area have been reaching out to me, and they're ready for this project to be completed. So the faster we can get this, but we're still having the comfortable work done in place, infrastructure. I want to make sure that we can get as fast as possible, and that's something I'm looking forward to. Thank you, Leon.
Good evening, Councilman Tobias here. Leon, how are you, sir? I have two questions, going back to Lehman. Okay, first of all, it looks great. The streets are wide, and I like the sidewalks. It's being used already. I can tell a lot. Now, question number one was, looking at the lamppost, I was assuming that those were going to be regular streetlights, the real large one versus these. And then also, I didn't know if that was already budgeted in for that, or were there going to be other larger lampposts heading all the way down? And the second thing was, you did mention that they're going to be doing some cleanup within the next month or so. I just want to make sure that if you look over there by the pond, you have all that black tarp and all those metal fencing and the wires. And of course, I see that there's some piping down at the end. I drove by there, I think it was, this weekend, and just wanted to make sure that eventually the contractors will clean up all their equipment, all their debris, all their extra piping fittings and all that stuff in the near future. So that way, it doesn't be such of a nice off right now. Rizzo?
Leon, are you there?
Looks like you lost, Leon. Maybe I can jump in.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Did I just talk over somebody? There he is. Leon, can you talk a little louder?
I lost my connection again. Apparently poor internet in this part of the city. Actually, I'm not in the city, I'm just a bit outside of city limits, but we have poor connection here. No, I'm sorry.
So since Leon missed a question, maybe I can just try to answer it, and then Leon can fill in the gaps.
Okay.
So Councilmember Tobias, the lighting you're referring to is Cobra headlighting, you know, much taller and usually not decorative. The lights that were spec'd for Lehman Road are the same fixtures that we have on Philomena and as Burleson. So these are pedestrian-scale lighting. They're supposed to be a little easier on the eyes. They still cast a good amount of light, and, you know, that brightness can be controlled, their LED. So these lights, because they are decorative like this, these are city fixtures and our obligation. Those taller Cobra headlights are typically just PEC poles and, you know, go into the general lighting scheme of the rest of the city. So because this is a major thoroughfare, major, you know, hopefully pedestrian thoroughfare as well as it intersects with our city trail, we did try to preserve more of the decorative pedestrian-scale lighting look and feel on this road. So I hope that answers that question.
Yes. Yes, I was wondering if it's between the city pole, light pole that were, if there's any kind of maintenance or anything where we need to fix it, that'll come on us versus actually having to deal with PEC over their plant post.
Yes, sir. Since they are atypical to what PEC provides, these are city poles and city responsibility.
Okay.
And then the second question, on the staging ground and whether or not that will be cleaned up. Once the contractor finishes up with the final punch list items, they will be going through and removing any leftover wiring and, you know, spoils that you see there around the lake.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Councilmember, we have a really lengthy punch list already prepared, so we were just having him focus on the road at this point. There's quite a few things that we need for him to follow up on.
That's good, thank you. I just did want to get to where, six months from now, you're going to still see all that tar? You're going to see all those wiring out there, and it's going to be a matter of, okay, who's going to clean it up? Is it the contractor? Is it the city? Or we got to get the city to come out there and finish it up? And just wanted to make sure that if it's on them, that they follow through on the payment up everything. Thank you, sir.
Once we sign off on everything on the punch list, the contractor is basically done with the project other than for material failures, which, you know, there's a two-year bond on the road. So if there are items that are hanging out there, like, you know, tar on the road that needs to be peeled up, you know, let us know that. We'll make sure that's on the final walkthrough and punch list, because again, after we sign off, that does become our responsibility.
So Scott, my suggestion there, and Leon, would be to come up with some kind of process for looping council in to that punch list process. I don't mean bringing in council out with you to inspect, but just with the understanding that the moment we're told that it's done, there's going to be seven members of this council that are going to get in their vehicles and go drive and take a sharp look at it. So there's no scenario where poor standards of work are going to be tolerated. So I know we're at 91% complete on the, you know, on the payout schedule. So I know we're at 91% complete on the, you know, on the payout schedule. This is certainly be the time when the contractor is telling us that they're wanting to yet again, extend past the deadline to, to make sure that those last dollars are hard to get until they finish their project correctly. And staff is fully satisfied that the punch, the punch list is going to be something that when council goes to view that road, we're going to agree is substantially complete and where they've earned that final 9%. So I know that's not incredibly pleasant for me to say, but that is the best path forward to making sure we get this thing finished correctly. I might also add that it would be beneficial, I think, for council to receive weekly updates. Or in, you know, there's, in off weeks when we are not meeting to receive the update from Leon, to have a, an email sent to us letting us know. Because we're talking about, you know, two to four weeks for this project to, to be completed. So would like to know every single week whether that is still on schedule and whether they are still getting that road to the point where it can be opened back up to the residents by the end of this month. So we can't, obviously, we can't be out there with them. I wish we could sometimes because I feel like we could build the road faster than them sometimes because it just takes so long. But that's obviously just armchair quarterbacking the deal. I know how much of a struggle it's been, you know, acquiring the right away and moving utility lines and dealing with unknown variables that are all over the place. But this, this, this final push, I, I think the contractor needs to have the mentality that the, the ground they're walking on is hot, hot, hot because they shouldn't be there. They're, they should not be there. They should have been finished. And so there shouldn't be this sense of, you know, we're just slowly getting through. It should be every day that we are here, the, 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 the city is increasingly frustrated with the performance.
Well said, mayor.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate that.
Mayor and council, we have, we hold a retainage on these projects of 5%. So even when he's finished with the last item, we'll pay him for that completion of that item, but we still own that 5%. And typically what we do is we'll walk the project from one end to the other with public force department. So we get another set of, several sets of eyes, see if there's any issues. Because ultimately, they're going to have to be, have the crews out there fixing the issue, whatever that is. So they're, they have a definite interest in that, essentially to make sure that everything's covered. And then we'll stay with the contractor and tell them this is what you need to do to get your last payment. And we'll sit on that until it's all done.
Thanks.
5% is a pretty good significant number on these projects.
Well, I'd love for council to get apprised in real time as to where we stand on that. So if, you know, maybe every Tuesday or next Tuesday, even though we're not meeting, if you could send an email updating the council on the status of that road.
Will do.
Thank you. All right. Anything else to discuss related to the consent agenda? All entertain a motion.
Mayor, motion to approve consent agenda as written.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Ellison. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Shiel.
I just want to, I guess, advertise for the item number 13. If any business would like to apply, go to hayescountiecap.com. Thank you.
Mayor. Sorry, mayor, can you hear me? I think I was on mute.
Yeah, go ahead, Robert.
I, I just wanted to pull 12, just to have a quick question on it. And if we could do that, item 12.
Well, we're in, we're in the form of the motion, second right now, but you're, you're, well, hang on. You're just, you're welcome to ask your question right now and just call up.
Okay, so the question is, is what, after the approval of this contract is to Jerry, what is our start date for this service contract to start with the citizens?
Council member Rizzo, this is Jerry Hendricks, Chief of Staff. For the record, we're shooting for the first part of September. We're just about there. We're working on our forward-facing collateral right now. And hopefully we can finalize that next week and then we should be good to go. We will advise you well in advance of launching this program.
Thank you, Jerry. I'm good, mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 7-2-0. Next up, we have a public hearing on an item that's been withdrawn. The, an ordinance amending chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 179.33 acres of land from agriculture to R1A for a property located on East Post Road, just north of Quill Ridge subdivision. This item does have a public hearing. Mr. Coons, do you want to give us the update and then we'll do the public hearing?
Sure, I can, Mr. Mayor. This is Howard Coons. I'm the Community Developer Director for the city of Kyle, for the record. And this is the property we commonly refer to as the Spooner Track. They are revising their request and in that revision, some of the requests they're going to make are more intensive than what they had originally asked for. And for that reason, they're going to do a full cycle deferral. They're going to go back through planning and zoning for a new recommendation and it will come back to you later this year.
Okay. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. Seeing none, I'm going to open it up. Is there anyone who's registered to speak or who's coming to City Hall that wishes to speak?
None here.
All right. I do not believe we have anyone online. So with that, I guess you're saying go ahead and close the public hearing, Howard, correct? And indefinitely suspend?
No, I'd actually rather you make a motion that just accepted their withdrawal with, without prejudice and allow them the opportunity to, to reapply.
Okay. All right. If there are no objections, I'm going to go and close the public hearing. It's now closed. And I'd like to make a motion to accept the, the applicant's decision to restart the process with an amended proposal without prejudice, allowing them to bring it back at their convenience.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilor Shiel. Is there any further discussion? Was that a good enough motion, Howard?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 7-2-0. Next up, agenda item number 15, consider approval of a development agreement with Caltera Capital Partners LLC for an as-yet unnamed subdivision slash development located on the southwest corner of Kohler's Crossing and I-35. Mr. Coons?
So what we've put first on the agenda is the development agreement that's related to a zoning request from Caltera for, it's about 15 and a half acres. And it's at the southwest corner of I-35 Frontage Road on, on the southbound side and Kohler's Crossing. So if you're familiar with landmarks, it's immediately south of the Sunoco, I believe, gas station and the Slaczkis deli over near Evo. This is a property that is seeking a concurrent zoning, which had just a week ago gone to the planning and zoning and is later on tonight's agenda for your action, for the council action. What they're looking to do is have a mixed use development there on the 15 and a half acres. And for surety stake on the part of both the applicant and on the city, they've entered into a development agreement which adds some additional processes, procedures and some guarantees above and beyond our statutory zoning expectations that we have just from the zoning ordinance. So pretty detailed language in there about architectural styles and materials and about some land uses and the processes involved to enable land uses. The text of the language itself is borrowed very heavily from that, which was approved for the Endeavor project, which is the little over 50 acres just to the north. And that was approved by the council a couple of months ago. So you've seen initial versions of this. We got your input over the last couple of weeks and this is the finalized version for your vote tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Coons? Howard, is this an item that will come back if the development agreement is approved and the process of the corresponding land uses that would correspond with the development agreement would then go back through PNC and city council? Is that what we're considering?
So the development agreement itself will be decided this evening. If you approve and enter into the agreement, that will be done. There will be a number of additional entitlements required of the applicant because they are still in the I-35 overlay. So there will be conditional use approvals, which are basically the approvals of the architectural style that must be commensurate with the language that's in the development agreement. If they choose to add land uses that are enumerated in the DA above and beyond the uses that are permissible by the, the straight zoning, then they also may come back for additional approvals. But as it, the, the reason that this is on tonight's agenda is that if the zoning is approved unanimously on first read, then we would want the DA to be in force prior to the zoning being approved in force. So there's a chance that everything can be approved tonight.
Okay. The zoning is on the next item, I see.
That's correct.
Gotcha. My suggestion then would be that we leave this item open and go ahead and bring up the next item. Open the public hearing and have that, and then we will discuss both of them together.
You can do that.
Okay. Are there any objections to that? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and leave this item open and also open up agenda item number 16, which was postponed at our last meeting. An ordinance amending chapter 53 zoning of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose to assign original zoning to approximately 15.48 acres of land from agricultural to retail services and to assign original zoning to approximately 12.25 acres of land from agriculture to multifamily R33, property located on the southwest corner of Kohler's Crossing and I-35 Frontage Road. This item does have a public hearing. Do you want to give more commentary on this right now or do you want me to go ahead?
I'll, I'll give a quick introduction before anybody else wants to speak. I know that Lisa Crane, who's the property owner, is present this evening and has requested the opportunity to speak during this item. So we want to make sure there's an opportunity for her. But before we start, I'm going to, if, if it's not too forward, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here because I've got some visuals that I wanted to put up. So this is the site we're talking about for zoning. It's the southwest corner of Kohler's and I-35, southbound Frontage Road. And what they're asking for is a type of dual zoning. This is a pretty good look at what the overall property looks like. And the entirety of the site, the 15 and a half acres, will have RS zoning applied to it, which is recommended in the comprehensive plan and was recommended by the PNC a week ago, six to nothing. Additionally, there will be 12 acres that are away from the Kohler's and I-35 frontages that will have R33, which is our multifamily, 28 units to the acre, multifamily residential. That will be assigned to the, the back part of the property, which will afford them the opportunity to have residential as well as the commercial uses enabled in RS. So there was a public hearing a week ago where staff presented this to the PNC, very limited discussion. They recommended approval of this six to nothing and staff does as well. So I can make myself available for any questions or open the public hearing and get input from the public at once.
Okay. Thank you, Howard. If there are no objections, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the audience or online who wishes to speak?
None here.
All right. I'm not seeing anyone online either. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. It's now closed.
Lisa Crane. Yes.
No, does Ms. Crane, you're not a part of the public hearing. We're just going to invite you to speak. No time limits. So that way we can interact with you and not just sit and listen. Sorry, I should have said that ahead of time, but Ms. Crane, the floor is yours.
Oh, yes. My family has owned this property for about 36 years. It's been livestock farming hay and raised our kids there, horses, cattle. And we think that Caltera just has a great vision and plan. And the partnership backs that completely. And we think that they are the best, have the best plan, period. And this is my daughter, Leslie Crane.
Hi. We completely back up.
That's, that's, that's a lot to look up to there, Clint.
Absolutely. And I'll, I'll say a few words if Lisa and Leslie are wrapped up as well.
We're good.
Okay. So first of all, thank you, Lisa and Leslie, and thank you, Howard, for the introduction. I, I'm not going to go into a detailed presentation tonight. I just wanted to let, you know, city councils know that I am here on behalf of, of Caltera and on, on behalf of the application. You know, my, my goal is to be here tonight to supplement anything that Howard has presented to you and, and answer any and all questions. But I, you know, first and foremost, we initially engaged with Lisa back in, gosh, I think, March. And then we've been working with the city staff since at least May, maybe even April. And we've had a lot of back and forth and, and iterations of site planning discussions with all of the city staff, including, you know, Scott Sellers, Howard, Will and team and, and the serve as well. And I just wanted to thank everybody because it's been a really exhaustive process. I think it was, it was very, it was time well spent trying to work together to get this right before we put it in front of, of planning and zoning last week. And we were excited about the results last week and, and we're, we're hopeful that, well, we're appreciative that you guys are considering it. And obviously, we're, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to move forward on this. So thank you.
Thank you, Clint. And I'll just say for myself, to the Crane family, I know this particular project and proposal is not the first thing you've tried to bring to the city of Kyle. And there's been, it's taken some time. But I want to thank you for the perseverance and endurance to, to bring forward a quality developer and a quality proposal that is something I think, just as you said, that I think we can all be proud of. So thank you for that and your willingness to continue to talk to staff. I know you've had many meetings with staff. I don't want that to go unnoticed. I know those are stressful at times. So. Counsel, counsel, any comments or thoughts? Movements?
Mayor.
We should probably be deliberate in our motion because we have two items open now, I guess.
Oh, yeah, we do indeed. I think that you, because the public hearing is now closed and unless, does anyone from staff have an objection to voting on it simultaneously? I'm sorry, anyone from council? Okay. So my, my recommendation would be to vote on 15 and 16 collectively and take one vote.
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the development agreement with Caltera Capital Partners LLC and also approve the ordinance amending chapter 553 of the city of Kyle for the purpose of assigning original zoning to approximately 15.4 acres from AG to RS.
Okay. Second, it's been moved by Councilor Shiel, seconded by the mayor that we approve agenda items number 15 and 16 as written. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries 7-2-0. Is there any objection? Was, is 16 a first reading? I guess it's not, but it has a public hearing, so it seems like it should need to be finally passed.
16 is a, is a zoning action, so it can be finally passed after first reading?
Well, it'd have to come back. It's just not listed as first reading. It could have gotten overtaken by the bracket postponement language. Just want to make sure we do it right.
You'd have to ask Page that. I'm not sure.
Sorry, I'm, I'm pulling up the, confirming with the agenda posting. Okay. Yeah, the not calling out first or second reading does not affect your ability to have it, have it finally approved tonight.
Okay. Is there any objection to having this item finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Thank you, Cranes. Thank you, Clint.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crane family. Appreciate it.
All right. Next up, agenda item number 17, second reading. An ordinance amending chapter 53 of the city of Kyle, Texas, for the purpose of rezoning approximately 16 acres of land from RS to MXD and to rezone approximately 14 acres of land from RS to R33, with 6.4 acres to remain as RS for the property. with 6.4 acres to remain as RS, uh, for the properties located, uh, on the north corner of, oh, it's Philomena Drive. Uh, so I'm gonna step down. Yep, yep, all right, put me on hold.
Don't go too far, Mayor.
All right, sounds good.
Okay, uh, this is for, uh, Philomena Drive, uh, last meeting. Uh, city council voted six oh to approve this on first reading. Uh, Howard?
Uh, yeah, I don't have a lot to add at the, uh, conclusion of the first reading. There was some discussion about, um, the, the R33 portion that is the, the furthest north that is being reserved for exclusively multifamily, whether or not there would be an opportunity to instead convert that request to MXD to match the adjacent request, uh, for the, the, the portion of the property that's in the, the center. And, and what I'm gonna do here real quick is, um, share my screen just so we can have a visual so you can see what I'm talking about. So, um, this is I-35 here on the left side of the screen. Uh, this is the northbound frontage road. This is Philomena that heads back towards, um, the hospital. And the, the discussion was about whether or not these acres over here, this R33, could be incorporated into this MXD. R33 has a provision that allows for residential, uh, multifamily residential up to 30 units to the acre so long, um, as that residential is predominantly not located on the ground floor with very limited and restrictive, um, exceptions to that requirement. And then the, the RS down here at this point is already existing. It's just being noted in the zoning request so that it can show that it's, um, not changing and that's just the size of what will be remaining. It should be noted that, um, to change this request from the city to the applicant, from R33 to MXD would be an increase in, in intensity from the zoning standpoint, and we would not be able to do that tonight. It would require full cycle deferral to go back through planning and zoning for a new recommendation to come back to this group. So, um, that was the, the nature of the research on the part of staff. The applicant, uh, who's present this evening, David, um, would, did, um, send some information. I, I think it came from David or one of his colleagues that had, um, put some information together about basically why, uh, they had requested R33 back there and they felt that the mix was still present as far as the land uses. It was just the, uh, development package and the architectural style of being able to have the residential back there. Um, if it still functioned together because it's being developed as one project, it just would not be integrated, um, neither horizontally nor vertically. So, um, that's why ordinarily this would be second read and on consent, but, um, I remember at the end of the last time you wanted to talk a little bit more about it. So I can, I can answer any additional questions if there are any. Or, uh, the applicant's representative David, Representative David is here tonight as well. He can also speak directly to the project.
Does, uh, anybody have any questions for the applicant?
So, uh, just for the purpose of sharing with everyone, and I, I, I'll admit I must've missed that. Uh, David, thank you for being here tonight. Could you kind of, uh, summarize more or less, uh, what that information was that you sent us as far as, uh, thought process behind, uh, the R33 and the MXD?
Uh, sure, thank you, Councilmember, uh, David Kinselowski for the, uh, property owner developer. Uh, the zoning mix before you was, is based on, um, a study that was done, you know, based on what we think the, the area, uh, would allow for absorption. Uh, we, we do believe that it's sized appropriately for the different zoning and it would be built as if it were one development. Um, it would basically be developed at the same time. But so, you know, we wanted to make sure that we could absorb enough density on the R33 and enough density in, in, in square footage on the MXD and the same for the RS. And so the sizing of the acreage, uh, for each zoning category, we feel is appropriate, uh, based on the market studies we've done. Um, and so that's in a nutshell what we've, what we've shared with, with staff and, um, we're hoping that, uh, basically y'all will agree that, uh, it is still appropriate based on your last, your last vote and the planning commission recognition. So, um, that said, everything, again, if approved, um, by, by the council tonight, we would, uh, move forward with the site plan process accordingly and of course build to, to, to code. We don't expect any variances of any sort being, uh, being, uh, proposed in the future. And we would, um, want to build it more or less at the same time, uh, as buildout allows and absorption, uh, rates continue, which we think will, will happen fairly quick. There's gonna be a fair amount of interest, uh, fair to high amount of interest in this particular tract, uh, or development, um, and all three components of it that have been receiving phone calls about from many, 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 uh, uh, end users. And so, uh, we would just like to get this part done so we could then build out accordingly to code and, uh, use it accordingly. I hope that answers your question. So, if not, let me know, I'm, of course I'm here to answer anything else.
So David, you said that all three zoning areas are gonna be built concurrently?
We're, we're gonna try, we'd like to. We, I can't guarantee that, but, uh, they, I, I, I will say that they, regardless of, of concurrent or not, they will, uh, be of similar scale in architectural articulation. So it'll look more or less as, as if it's one built-out project at, at the end. But if we can get started on the multifamily, get started on the MXD, get started on the RS, if there's enough interest, which we think there is, then certainly we're, we're prepared to do that, uh, once we get a site plan and ability from it.
If they weren't gonna run concurrently, which one would you say would be built first?
Um, I, I would probably lean towards the, uh, the RS and the R33. The MXD is a little, it's a little harder to, to, to find the end user for it, uh, compared to the other two. But I, if I had to take an educated guess, that's what I would, I would, based on the, on the input I'm getting from, from end users that are calling me wanting to develop or occupy space.
Any other questions from council?
So, could we put that map back on the screen? I just wanna, uh, take a look at it.
Yes, I can, give me one second.
Thank you, Howard.
That one?
Yeah, that's it. So we're talking about developing the RS and the R33 before the MXD, correct?
Well, we're not, I mean, uh, Councilmember, that's a, that's a, that's speculative. Uh, we would, we would prefer to do all three at the same time if we could, uh, and we think we can, but I can't guarantee that we could, that, that, that that's will occur. I don't, I don't think it will be like a condition of any, you know, possible approval you may, you may consider, but, um, certainly, um, it was just a response to, if I had to pick one or the other, I think the RS, the retail and apartments on the opposite side would be easier to absorb than the MXD.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Uh, if there's, uh, no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
All right, bro, Tim, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion to approve Item Number 17 by Councilmember Rizzo, a second by Councilmember Tobias. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much, David.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Next up is, someone can get the mayor. Next up is, uh, Item 18 and ordinance amending Chapter 53 zoning of the City of Kyle for the purpose of rezoning approximately 6.67 acres of land from, uh, PUD, uh, to RS and a approximately 8.2 acres from PUD to R13, uh, in, on, uh, the 800 block of the road formerly known as Rebel Drive on, uh, North Greg Clark Park in Hayes County. Howard? Oh, it just has a public hearing. Need to go ahead and open that public hearing now?
Please, sir.
I will go ahead and open the public hearing for Item Number 18. Is there anybody, uh, online, uh, ready to speak on this public hearing? Or anybody in, uh, council chambers?
None here.
Do we need to keep this open for any reason, Howard?
Nothing aware.
Okay. Seeing that there's no one here for the public hearing, I will go ahead and close the public hearing and hand this ad, item back over to, uh, Mayor Mitchell. Howard, go ahead.
And he, he is, Mr. Mayor is muted, so I'm gonna go ahead and not speak over him, I don't think so, but.
You can go ahead and take over, Howard.
Just visually. Um, so what we're looking at is the 47 acres that are behind the post office. Between the post office and Hometown Kyle, on the far south end of Hometown Kyle, uh, just between Greg, uh, Clark Park, the post office and Hometown. Um, on your screen now is the existing zoning. This entire project was done at one time as a planned unit development, a PUD zoning. Has town homes on the far south or southwest as it may be, and then single-family detached, uh, on the west, north and central part. And then there was a, a very little bit of retail that was on the east, uh, over near the corner of Rebel Drive. The request before you is not necessarily to change the PUD. It's still gonna be developed as a, 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 one comprehensive plan. What they're looking to do, uh, affects, see if I can find, okay. This, um, on your screen now, the, the, the parent boundary runs here. It's most of the square with the exception of whatever's developed already down here already. What they're looking to change are these two yellow parcels right here. And when I go down, um, to their, their application down here at the bottom of the staff report, you can see, um, what the request will be. Here it is. So, what they're going to do is currently this, um, boot heel shaped parcel, um, is currently zoned R1A. And what they're looking to do is change that to R13. Uh, the net effect of that will not be that it will change the land use. It will still be single-family detached residences, which was always their plan. What it will do is require a larger lot. R1A allows a lot down to 35 feet in width and very diminutive side setbacks. The R13 requires no less than 50-foot wide lots, um, but gives a little bit more advantage in front and rear setbacks compared to R1A. And the reason that's important is because, um, this site is, uh, this, uh, area is shaped this way because of the drainage, the offsite drainage that comes from the south end of Hometown Kyle, which isn't represented on here, um, basically comes, comes right down, um, through, uh, the parcel right here where my cursor is and it curves over a little bit and then drops under the street and goes through an open ditch in Greg Clark Park. Um, what they wanna be able to do is shift the, the, the location of the homes a little bit and they needed the more narrow front yard setbacks to be able to do that. At the same time, this piece of land over here, this rectangular, um, was also zoned, um, R1A for, uh, single-family detached. And what they've done is, um, looked for this to be resident, um, to be commercial. RS is our retail services highway commercial district. And they're gonna capture and take advantage of the frontage that's along, um, 150, the road formerly now known as Rebel Drive. So, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this a week ago and, um, unanimously sought that, uh, this be approved, this change be approved, as did staff because it's, um, uh, it, it is congruent with the comprehensive plan. So, if there's any questions, I can answer those, um, but that, that's the, the net change of this.
This is Councilman Tobias, I have a quick question. So just a matter of rezoning it to where the lots could be a little bit larger, is that what I'm understanding?
Well, that's the, this, this shape over here, this boot shape, uh, interior to the site, these lots will have to be larger than what was previously enabled.
It'd be nice if we did, but if it stays dry and then lightning hits, it costs fires.
Councilmember Realobos, you're, uh, unmuted. Howard, uh, my, my question is something you brought up a few minutes ago. Is that the drainage from there goes up over to, uh, Greg Clark Park? And then that drains out to, uh, the, uh, south side, I mean, the, the east side of Scott Street, which we know we're having a lot of drainage problems over there. Um, I'm thinking about timelines. I know we've got some work going on over there. Will that area be able to tolerate this type of drainage?
And that's. None of the development inside the site itself will contribute to the drainage that's coming through the site. The drainage that's coming through the site is simply being channelized and improved so that the remainder of the site is developable. But as far as the volume of what's coming through, the volume of the, uh, storm, uh, effluent coming through this site is from Hometown. Uh, it is not contained. It is an area of Hometown Kyle that was never, um, uh, put into any type of, um, drainage or detention structure. So it sheet flows today, it sheet flows across this property and, um, later is concentrated in the open ditch that's south of Greg Drive. Now it's going to be, uh, collected in an open ditch through this property and then under Greg Drive and continue. So the volume, the velocity, none of this, um, specs related to that stormwater will be changed by the development of this site. This site, the effluent from stormwater, will be required to be captured for itself in its own pond and released at its own rate.
And where's the release for that pond?
That is an excellent question to which I do not have the answer in front of me right now.
And I, I can tell you, I, I love the new zoning. You know, I'm almost an advocate for larger lot sizes. Uh, I'm just, I'm just worried about the drainage is my concern, but, uh, I, I'm glad that they've got a drainage facility in the back. Um, I'm just, I'm just thinking on the, on the, uh, the ongoing problems we have, uh, just east of Scott Street with the drainage there. And I know we've got, I believe we've got something going, some kind of, um, construction going on there to try to alleviate some of that. I don't know, Scott, is that correct? Am I correct in that?
I'm sorry, Robert, I, I missed a question. Can you ask that one more time?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking about the trade, drainage that goes on south of Scott Street. Uh, we've got some flooding issues there. I was just making sure, I, I think I've heard somewhere that we're addressing that drainage there just south of, just east of Scott Street.
Yeah, uh, thank you for that question.
And just south of library, yeah.
Yeah, that is a, a project that we anticipate to bring forward very soon as part of the Drainage Master Plan. That will be one of the first large, uh, capital projects that we bring forward to address the, the Scott and Sledge Street drainage issues.
What, what's the timeline on bringing that forward? Do, do you know?
Uh, yes, we, we have actually, uh, gone out and have discussed this with, uh, with our existing engineering company. What we, we did not want this to, to slow down the Elliott Branch project, so we actually pulled back a little bit. Uh, at an upcoming council meeting, we will have our revised rotation list for engineering and it will be the first project given to the new engineering company on that rotation list. So, so that's a, a long way to say this fall, we will begin engineering for that, that stormwater project.
Okay, and I'm just thinking about, uh, uh, that area and what this project could potentially bring to it. Um, I'm, I'm, I think I've, you've answered all my questions, uh, but I, I'm good with the, the amendment change on it. Thank you, Scott.
Howard, this is, uh, Councilmember Sheil. Um, all right, so that channeling of the, uh, water through the new proposed, um, R13 area, you know, because you said before, it, right now it is a sheet flow, but as you go through that area, now it's gonna be more channeled. You said that there's going to be a pond before it gets to the detention pond at, uh, Greg Clark. Is that correct? To help slow that down a bit?
There will be a stormwater management facility on this site that collects the stormwater that is created by this site. But there is stormwater today that sheet flows across the site that's unchecked. There's no improvements. It just goes underneath Greg Drive at a culvert somewhere along this section of the road. So today, in the undeveloped state, it sheet flows. Um, the the current plan, irrespective of tonight's action, but the current plan. Was for this to be developed with the R one A residential all through this area. And then um, there would be a uh, an open channel created for that offsite that already exists. Just to be managed separately from that which is created by the development of the remainder of the forty seven acres that's being developed.
And that part I I understood, so I guess what I'm questioning though is the um, the flow from uh, hometown Kyle going through the R one three channel. Is gonna go into the um, Greg Clark Park. Det- detention area at a higher rate, because it will no longer be sheet, it will be channeled. So well, how will that affect our detention pond, uh, that it goes into a Greg Clark Park?
I'd rather talk with the city engineer or perhaps with one of our civiles like Kishav. Who can tell me whether or not the velocity will change by concentrating that into a ditch.
Okay, I'm just, you know, concerned about the engineering of that. That pond.
Howard?
Yes.
This is Brett Corwin, the developer.
Hey Brett, how are you?
Hey man, if you uh.
This is the applicant, everybody, so maybe he knows.
Yeah, this is Brett Corwin, I'm uh, with the development team. Um, on the uh, on the drainage for this. So the drainage does like Howard explained, come down through that channel right there. And then it um, kinda right about where you see that arrow that calls out that point nine six. There's a culvert under there.
Mm-hmm.
And we have a, we'll have a detention pond right there that will gather all drainage from the from the project. And then it releases it at. A um, a rate that is the same as is going through there right now. So it won't um. The flow rate will not be more, or it won't be, yeah, will not be greater than it is already.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Great, that that's, that that uh, helps a lot, thank you very much for that information.
Yes, sir.
Cause I, uh, this is Councilman Tobias, I think what uh, Councilor Rizzo is is concerned about just like he is, when we have these heavy rains. Um. That water becoming very, very strong, maybe in this area too. We just wanna make sure that there's no overflow or anything that gets caught up uh, during that time, so saying is that right up in this area where that arrow's at? You're gonna have those ponds, you're gonna go in collecting the water at a even rate?
Yes, sir, yeah, so the the engineers do a great job of designing those ponds to um, collect those higher. Those those large drains and then the ponds. Do their job of um, just releasing that, not. All at once, but just um, metering it out so it so it um, doesn't have. Uh. Detrimental effects downstream, so.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance amending chapter fifty-three. Of the city of Kyle, Texas for the purpose of rezoning approximately six six. Seven or six point six seven acres of land from P U D. To uh, P U D and rezone approximately eight point two zero acres from P U D. Uh, to a planned unit development.
Seconded. Been moved by Councilmember Sheel, seconded by Councilmember Tobias, is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries seven to zero, uh, this is first reading, is there any objection to this item being finally passed? Hearing none, item is finally passed. Thank you Brett, good luck.
Yeah, thanks, yes.
Thank you Brett.
Uh, next up, agenda item number.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, first reading, approve an ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas adopting a budget totaling one hundred and thirty four point two million dollars. For all city funds and uh, for the ensuing fiscal year beginning October first twenty twenty. And ending September thirtieth two thousand twenty-one. Appropriating revenue and expenditure amounts thereof for all city funds, authorizing a ten percent increase in water and wastewater service rates. No change in storm drainage fees, a two and a half percent increase in solid waste service charges, all other fees and charges for city services. Capital improvement program expenditures, addition of twenty-two new full-time positions for a total of two hundred and seventy-nine. Full-time equivalent positions, carryover of encumbrances, all associated schedules and documents, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith. Providing for an effective date, Mr. Sellers.
Alright, Mayor, Council, thank you very much, uh, we have spent several months. Developing together the budget that has been presented to you and to the public. Uh, we took a lot of care in this budget and also with the. Uh, revised tax rate, which as listed is is uh, two cents lower than than our current tax rate. Uh, with that, there are two opportunities for Council to continue to add input to the the budget. This reading uh, being first reading tonight and then second reading on August twenty-fifth. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions I do have here with me, Pervez Mohit and Andy Alejandro from the Finance Department. And we are, we're happy to uh, to answer questions and and go through the budget as required.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers, anybody have any questions for Scott?
Yeah, uh, Mayors, Councilmember Rizzo, um. I uh, wanted to bring something forward, amendment to the budget. Um, and what I'm, I was looking at as our two percent uh, increase to uh, staff. Um, that uh, excluding department heads. I uh, wanted to do a little more research on to see what it would cost the city yearly. Uh, to give staff, uh, department heads as well a two percent raise, reason being is that during COVID nineteen. Not only did the boots on the ground step up and help us with everything, which I mean Parks Department, everybody else, we had staff. Have to relearn how to run, uh, to do their jobs within the city, some from home, some from uh, coming in. And some probably put in extra hours uh, during these times and I I kinda feel that a two percent increase. Uh, wouldn't be so substantial if we were to look at it, so I I uh, emailed uh. Uh, our city manager Scott Sellers to see what that would look like and he came back with uh, it would be thirty one thousand six hundred and fifty-four dollars more a year. Uh. So it it, uh, one of the things that we could look at in in funding this. Is uh, our health insurance rates go about ten, ten percent every year. And um, usually they come in lower than that actually, so we budget that amount in there, so I believe we could probably find the money there. Um, and also we could probably look at our budget year, it comes up with our revenues coming in. Uh, I know we had two bad months, uh, December and April, that our our revenues were a little low. But our other revenues were pretty high, I think that, I think that trend's gonna continue, so I'd like to uh, try to make an amendment to bring uh. Um, department heads into that two percent pay raise.
Okay, and what was the corresponding fund that you wanted to decrease?
Oh, so the Corey Funding uh, Fund would be on the health insurance rates, cause they usually do a a ten percent. Every year on that and it usually comes under ten percent. And uh, we we could get um, um, some more information, we could. So would Sandra have that information, Scott, on what the differences have been?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn to Pervez and and ask that question.
Sorry, Sandra.
Sandra, you're on, yeah, go ahead Sandra.
Okay, hi, this is Sandra Duran, Human Resources Director for the record. Uh, we are hoping that this year our rerate will be below ten percent. Um, but we won't get that until the end of August, because it takes into account all our claims until August thirty-first. So we're hoping for anywhere from six uh, to ten percent, hopefully six uh, will come in. So I don't, I don't think we're gonna have a ten. But we promise that uh, the the average for their pool is three and a half percent. And that they will not give anybody more than nine percent. So you can count for sure that one percent there from nine to ten.
I, I, okay, so I think I understand what you're discussing here and how you're proposing to get the funds, which is pretty smart, actually, I think that's a good, good move. Uh, you said that we're gonna get final numbers at the end of the month?
Yes, sir.
So my suggestion would be to wait until second reading. Uh, then we won't have to just randomly guess and change a projection without knowing. So.
And and I'm good, I I didn't know that's when we got the final numbers for it, so I'm 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 good with waiting till the final reading and bring bring this uh, back up to Council.
Do we have to second that motion or anything for it to go on to the next?
No, it's just when it comes back up, we'll ring it up there and we can get a report from Sandra when the time comes for what the amount of savings. Uh, from the budgeted amount, it's not savings, it's just we over budgeted for that item. Uh, and, right, so we'll know how much we over budgeted by exactly to the penny. And then uh, if you wanna take that and apply it towards the department head raises, we could probably vote on it then, I would think would be the best time.
Yeah, currently, right now, it's it's one percent, because they're saying it's not gonna be more than nine and we budgeted ten percent. I don't know if Pervez has that figure of what we have so far.
Since since we're going down this road, I have a question. Have we, have we seen what's happening with the fifty thousand dollars in pay parity that's been set aside?
I think, is is that a question for this future budget year? I i- if so, that's. That pay parity analysis.
We asked before. We we asked before, uh, earlier in this budget process to get a understanding, cause we have. Budgeted, budgeted dollars that go to department heads uh, in the budget currently for raises. Uh, we left pay parity in there, so what we're in the dark about is what does that correspond to in terms of the change in, uh, average change in department head wages? As a result of the current increases that are in the current budget, which was the reason we left department heads out, not because we didn't want to give them. Income, but because we had a more than thirty thousand dollars already budgeted. Uh, and we're told uh, that that some of that went to department heads, so. Or maybe the majority of it, I don't know, it, we we need analysis around that particular dollar in terms of where it's going.
The pay parity that was approved uh, in October was already applied across the um, the city. Um, so any of the ones that have the most differences of more than like thirty percent of what the parity was. They were applied to those. And the majority went to the uh, telecommunications, uh, the supervisor and the manager. And then some other uh, positions uh, across the city.
That's proposed in this current fiscal year?
That was for.
I'm sorry, the upcoming budget. We have out, we have dollars allocated for pay parity in the the proposed budget, in this budget that we're discussing.
And the budget the following year after that too, so that's what we're asking about.
We we wanna understand where those, how how that's all shaking up and not treat these things in silos, cause that's how we make mistakes.
Correct, majority of, okay, I'm working on that one, the majority will go to uh, the lower positions. Which are the technicians for public work, parks, streets, um, and some.
Sandra, why don't you send us the council an email? Cause I think that's what we asked for originally, was a breakdown of the fifty thousand dollars over the course of the three years. In pay parity that we had planned for this current year and the following two next budgets. So that we can see where everything is going, because that's why we left the department heads out during this year and did two percent across the board for everyone under that.
Okay, and is it fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand?
I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand broken over three different budgets.
Fifty thousand a year.
My understanding, it was almost five hundred thousand, it was a hundred and fifty thousand per year.
Oh, well then even more, so that's why we need to see it.
Just the the breakdown of the whole plan and program and then I think, you know, we we can just go from there, but. We don't need to to get it all immediately in the council meeting, we need that in a, in the form of a briefing ahead of time.
Alright, so the parity is done every year, uh, so right now we're gonna be working with old data. Which is what the uh, ranges are for the salaries for the past year for those cities, okay?
Right, we we understand, we understand parity changes, uh, cause once we go up, they go up and back and forth, but we we just. We're investing considerable dollars in increases for the positions that we have. And we wanna know what positions are being increased and by how much a, as a part of the overall plan. Whether or not the positions are uh, are appropriately compensated relative to parity is the discussion that is really not. Appropriate now, cause we already had it and voted on it and put it into the budget. We just, as the council is not really apprised of how it breaks, how the whole program breaks down.
Correct, I'll bring it to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
And uh, Councilmember Rizzo, just a kind of a side note. Um, yes, I know they've got it budgeted for um, ten percent and, you know, they're hoping only nine percent. But with insurance companies and especially how much they've had to pay out this year for the pandemic. Um, you never know what insurance companies are gonna, gonna do, so um, yeah. Just uh, just an FYI and kind of a, you know, heads up on that, okay?
But that that won't change mid-budget, right? Nope, okay, thank you.
And and this was just something that I brought forward and I'm willing to bring it back, uh, second rea- second reading, uh, final reading, I'm sorry, and uh. One reason is that um, I I just, you know, I just kinda felt that uh, everybody really stepped up and did their part and I I just wanted to say thank you. In a way and and know that we, as a council, are thinking of everybody that works for the city as a a very vital. Uh, member of of Team Kyle and I I, that's the only reason I was bringing it, I do, I do remember Councilmember Coach bringing up the uh. Pay priority coming up as well and I I did take that into effect uh, account as well. And uh, just, and that's kinda why I wanted to see what the the base number was, uh, giving department heads. Uh, a two percent raise and at the thirty one thousand, I I I asked God to come out and help me and. We got a little creative and and we were able to find maybe a a potential source. Uh, just wanna say thank you to city manager for uh, all his help as well, thank you, Scott.
Hey, good job, thank you. Thank you for your help on that, Scott.
Very good job. Alright, well, uh, any anybody wanna take anything up, uh, anything else up on this uh, this item, we'll save it. Uh, if you want, the majority of of any, unless there's something that needs to be brought up for second reading. Uh, oftentimes those final amendments go on second uh, second reading, so I suspect that even though. We may not make a lot of amendments at this particular time, that we'll we'll all have something or other to uh, to bring for second reading. Uh, as well, so. Uh, my advice would definitely be to to follow the path that Councilman Rizzo uh, established, if you have thoughts about making adjustments to reach out to staff. Uh, so that they can do their analysis prior to the next meeting, which will help our deliberations go a lot smoother. Alright, um, anything else for this budget?
Yes, Mayor, I would just like to um, point out and just kinda get this uh, out in the open once again. To remind people that this budget and um, our tax rate. Uh, constitutes only twenty percent of their entire uh, property tax rate, so um. You know, the other eighty percent is all up in the air to everybody else, so we can only control our twenty percent and uh, I think we've done a good job with that, so. I just wanna throw out again, it's only twenty percent, thanks.
Okay. Thank you, any other thoughts? Motion? Alright, I'd like to make a motion to approve uh, the first reading of the ordinance adopting the two thousand twenty-one budget as written.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Bielobos, is there any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Allison?
Aye.
Tobias?
Aye.
Coach?
Aye.
Sheil?
Aye.
Mitchell?
I don't think he heard you.
Bielobos? Aye.
Okay, Bielobos, Rizzo.
Right, I, I didn't hear you.
Rizzo, aye.
Call Mitchell.
I'm sorry.
We couldn't hear anything. Aye.
Okay, and then Rizzo, you were aye as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that everyone?
Present.
That was not our best roll call. Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 20. Uh, first reading, approve an ordinance in the City of Kyle, Texas fixing the adblock tax, property tax rate for the tax year 2020 at .5201 for $100 assessed valuation and providing for levying of adblock taxes for use in support of the municipal government of the City of Kyle. Uh, Mr. Sellers, anything to add on this one?
No, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilmember Sheil. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item number 21. Uh, consider impossible action to approve a resolution of the City of Kyle renaming Rebel Drive uh, to support and promote community camaraderie and tranquility to name, uh, to a name which will be advantageous to all diversities. Uh, to a propitious title for all of the citizens of Kyle, holding a public hearing, providing for related matters in accordance with the City of Kyle Code of Ordinances. Um, this item is not registered to have a public hearing, uh, but it does need to have one in order to get it, uh, passed. So attorney is advised that we can just open up a public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak, uh, considering that we just passed 134 million dollar budget on first reading without anyone coming to, uh, lift a voice yea or nay. I don't think we'll probably have much here, but we'll find out. Uh, so if there's no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing on this one right away before we go any further. All right, uh, hearing done. I'm gonna open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online wishing to, uh, speak who is registered? Or otherwise? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. It is now closed. Uh, and Steve and Samantha, I can see their, uh, their faces showing up. So they're gonna talk a little bit about the logistics, uh, of, uh, what happens when you go through a road name change. But before we do that part, I wanted to just give a little bit of the background, uh, on what's bringing this forward. Uh, obviously with the, uh, Hays C I D school district, the, the Hays High Rebel, uh, Rebels having changed their mascot. Uh, you know, originally the thought was that we were gonna take Rebel Drive to the voters as well. Uh, what we found out as a result of that process is that the power of initiative, uh, is not granted to the council currently. So instead of, uh, offering through the power of initiative, uh, for the voters to have a say on renaming Rebel Drive, uh, what we are allowed to do is ask the voters whether or not they wish to, uh, for us to ha, the council to have the power of initiative so that items like this in the future, uh, that the council can decide if it wishes, uh, to proposition the voters on such a matter. So, but, uh, unfortunately, the, uh, opportunity to, uh, bring this before the voters uh, is not something that we have, uh, at our disposal, uh, as a council right now. So, uh, considering the fact that the school district has already officially, uh, taken the vote to change the mascot, uh, uh, and greatly impacted by that, uh, I felt very comfortable going ahead and bringing the ordinance back, allowing for us to buy ordinance, go ahead and, uh, change the name if that was the council's will. Uh, and Samantha and Steve can talk about the logistics again. Uh, the, the backup material, as the council will notice, does not currently have a name in place. Uh, it's a blank. Uh, but that being said, the theme of the day, uh, as, as put forward by the majority of this council and staff has been, uh, one, celebrating, uh, uh, a, a, a true hero to the City of Kyle and Mr. Sonny Falcone and someone who, uh, really helped pioneer, uh, a lot of notoriety, uh, and bring a lot of enjoyment, not only to himself, uh, but, uh, throughout the, uh, throughout the world, really, by helping to coin, uh, the name fajita and, and to make it a popular dish. Uh, one of the things that I think that, uh, some of, I, I've heard the council speak about, if we were to rename Rebel Drive, uh, the desire would be to keep it non-controversial, uh, and allow for us to re-center, uh, that, that name uh, away from, uh, a, a, a word, uh, that is associated with a, a part of really American past and Texas history uh, that, that certainly we have, uh, kind of collectively as a society decided, uh, may not be the best image or, uh, uh, word or, or culture to celebrate. Uh, and, you know, the, the more, over the course of this year, that I've gotten to understand, uh, the true history of the fajita in Kyle and Mr. Falcone, uh, the more I, I kind of am bewildered that we don't celebrate him more. Uh, and a quick history lesson will show that the City of Kyle used to celebrate fajita and fajita fest. Uh, and fajita king, Mr. Falcone himself, was a big part of that before he passed away. Uh, and this just seems like the, it seems like the right time, uh, to bring forward a possible change. Uh, as to the name itself, there are a couple other things, you know, there's questions around, should we, what should we name, uh, the road after? Uh, uh, who, who should we name the road after? And one of the considerations was Mayor James Atkins, uh, who was, uh, Kyle's first African-American mayor who served, uh, for more than one term, uh, at the, uh, at the beginning of the century. Uh, and, uh, we have already named an entrance street after Mr. Atkins. And I believe, uh, Mr. Rizzo has got a proposal, uh, potentially seeking to honor Mr. Atkins, uh, coming up. Mayor Atkins. Uh, but this, this street, honestly, it, it made sense in, in my mind, and I think in the mind of many of us, uh, to potentially rename it after Mr. Falcone to help us bring it forward. So, so the question is, do you name it something like Sonny Falcone Drive? Which is the, a name that most people don't necessarily understand? Uh, or do you try to keep with the spirit of Rebel Drive? Which is a, uh, uh, a, a short, widely understood word, uh, and go with something like Fajita Drive? Um, and obviously I'm going the long-winded way of saying that Fajita Drive, uh, all things considered, makes a lot of sense for, uh, for me personally, uh, as a perfect replacement from Rebel Drive. It, we're taking, uh, a piece of Kyle history that does not deserve to be celebrated and replacing it with an even better piece of Kyle history that deserves to be celebrated, uh, far and wide. So, uh, with that, uh, I'd like to turn the floor over to really whoever would like to speak. Uh, but before we go too much further down the road of the Fajita Drive, if council would like, uh, we can turn the floor over to staff to discuss the, the logistics, uh, of what a name change would look like. Uh, does anyone of the council have a desire one way or another?
Please do that first.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Samantha Armbruster, Director of Communications for the Record, and I am joined by Steve, uh, with our planning department. We have a brief breakdown of the process for a name change in the City of Kyle. I'm gonna turn it over to Steve first to talk about the logistics and then I will end the presentation to discuss notifications. So Steve, take it away.
Okay, thank you. I am Steve Clemmons. I'm the G I S Administrator for the city. I manage all the mapping applications and part of that job is addressing coordinator, which also includes handling street name change process. And we don't do this very often, so I thought, uh, we thought it'd be a good idea to step through what actually happens here. So, uh, first of all, Rebel Drive is part of the state highway system. It's Ranch, part of Ranch Road 150. But, uh, the Texas Transportation Code and T E C S dot give control of naming streets like this over to the local jurisdictions. So we can, uh, do this without T E C S dot's, uh, approval. For the city's part, the street name change process is outlined in the city code, uh, chapter 38, article 7. And in general, the council can propose a street name change at any time. They simply must hold a public hearing and pass a resolution describing the new name and the extent of the road it applies to. In the code, it gives guidelines for the new name, which says should, uh, reflect the city's diversity and say something about the history or geography of the area or honor families or individuals with ties to Kyle. And, uh, I think the mayor did a good job describing how, how that works in this situation. So, um, the new name will replace Rebel Drive for the entire length of the street from West Center Street up to the intersection at FM 2770, uh, and North Full Stagecoach Road, where it, uh, it'll continue as Ranch Road 50 as it goes west from there. Uh, our Public Works Department will replace street signs. There's 14 intersections that they'll have to make new signs for. And also along that stretch of road, there are 14 commercial properties and 10 residences. But this also affects anyone who has a P O box at the post office and uses the physical address of the post office itself for deliveries. I will update 911 emergency service databases with the new name. But the Ranch Road 150 label will always be listed in their system as well. I will also notify the appraisal district and other mapping services like Google Maps and Big Maps, whatever people use online. And then I think Samantha will, uh, issue a press release and help with notifications to all the property owners and residences and she can take it from here.
Yes, as you mentioned, there would be a cer, a certified letter that would be sent to the business owners, property owners and the current residents in addition to a press release. Uh, also important to know is the notifications that would need to be done by the residents and the businesses uh, that are along this stretch of the roadway. So they would need to process an address change request with the post office. And then there is a list here of other providers that we would recommend, uh, them reaching out and notifying of their new address. All of this information that has been shared tonight would be included in the notification that's sent in the form of the certified letter and other notifications. Some notifications that won't be required, and Steve mentioned, uh, this a little bit, is the appraisal district because those are done by the, uh, legal description and not street address. The passport office, that is unnecessary unless they have an application that's currently in process. And we would also make sure that our internal utility service and billing is, is notified in process. So that would be unnecessary as a notification. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Samantha. Uh, anybody on council have questions or comments?
Mayor?
Now's the time.
I, Mayor?
I have, I have some thoughts.
I have some.
Yeah.
Um, I'm really excited about this item, uh, because I'm excited about, uh, the history of the fajita. Uh, about a year ago, um, I got to break bread with Councilman Rizzo and Councilman Bielobos. And, uh, they were telling me all about the history of, of Kyle. And, um, I'm from the Rio Grande Valley where we take our Mexican food very seriously. And they started telling me how Kyle was the birthplace of the fajita. And I told them to go take a hike, uh, because that could not possibly be true at all. And, uh, I didn't want us to get into a situation like Austin where all of a sudden they invented the breakfast taco. And, uh, you know, we go down that road. Um, but they kept telling me and showing me, uh, different things that, uh, led down to that path of it being true. And so, um, being a, a lover of history, uh, I immediately went and started researching it because I wanted to discredit it. And the more I searched to discredit it, the more, uh, it was in my face that, yes, Kyle does have a huge claim, uh, to, uh, the fajita, to the coining of, uh, the word fajita and to the selling of fajitas. Um, and it is documented in several places, in publications. And so last year, uh, was the 50th anniversary of the fajita, uh, in Kyle, um, with that name. And I just think it's an absolutely beautifully rich history, uh, for the city. One, uh, that I am ashamed that I didn't know about, uh, living in Hayes County since 1998. I had never heard that before un, until those two council members told me about it. And I think that this is step number one, uh, for this city to embrace that history, to honor that history and that culture and, uh, to move forward in the celebration of the fajita. And I think it's absolutely beautiful that, uh, we are bringing this up on National Fajita Day when Kyle, Texas is in fact the birthplace of the fajita. And I will say that proudly, uh, to anybody that asks. And annoyingly, half the time, uh, when I'm in a restaurant and someone brings me fajitas, I make it known that Kyle was where it all started. So I thank those council members very much for bringing that up and fighting for that history. And I look forward to continuing the work as this council to honor that history. So thank you all very much. I am just extremely pleased with this.
Council, council member Coach, uh, every time I hear that story, uh, it brings, uh, a certain level of emotion, the way it's, the way you tell it. And, um, it lends credence to the research that we have done and the anecdotal stories that we hear. But to come back forward and have that articulated and, and documented in history and, and quite frankly, within a dissertation at Texas A&amp;M is, uh, is, is huge. And it lends credence to a lot of the culture in, in our town and really truly the deep roots of diversity and, 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 uh, entrepreneur, entrepreneurialism and, and business and commerce and all those different things. A large influence in economy is the fajita all over the United States. So, um, for it to come here now, Sonny Falcone is from Mercedes, Texas. And to understand the affinity of that, that's where my, uh, that's where my, my grandmother was born, in Mercedes, Texas, uh, in a, a, uh, in a pier and beam house, uh, very poor house in the neighborhood where, you know, the Falcons family grew up. So, uh, knowing that and then coming forward and by accident, seeing that history and learning about it and then going back and asking questions about it, uh, uh, before, uh, my grandmother passed is, was, was good enough for me to confirm that, yes, definitely, you know, that's the guy. And they did bring it to Kyle. And what a wonderful, rich piece of culture to celebrate and to hang our hats on and to furthermore bring a celebration back to Kyle where it has been taken to other places. So thank you for this opportunity. I think it's a great moment for the City of Kyle.
It's Councilmember Rizzo. Uh, I just wanna say thank you, Mayor Potem, for, uh, for, uh, bringing that so, to us so elegantly. I, um, I, I kinda tear up when I think about our history, uh, where Kyle's come from, evolved from. I, I can tell you right now that, uh, growing up in Kyle was a blessing. Uh, everybody knew everybody and it's still almost like that today, even though we're a town of 50,000 plus. I've got so many new friends, so many new, uh, people that I, I see or deal with on a daily basis. And it, and it's a beautiful thing that we've got that family feeling still. But to bring some of our hi, history and, and combine it with the, the population we have now is, is just a, a positive in what Kyle is. There's a reason people come to Kyle. And that, that's because of our history and because our family feeling. And I, I really believe that sharing that part of history with the, the citizens of Kyle today is, is just a plus. And it's gonna continue to help Kyle carry that legacy of who we are. And, uh, I, 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 I hope that the kids get to see what I saw, the new kids here in Kyle, you know, growing up at the. You know, growing up at the fiestas, the families coming out together, all the smells, all the aromas, the music, the culture, everything that I experienced during those fiestas was amazing. And I hope other generations get that experience as well, you know, coming out and seeing everybody at every puesto and which is our food booths, doing the best they could with whatever different meats they were cooking, you know, from fajitas to horlitas to three bus to anything that you could make to hamburgers, you know, is something that really incorporated what the fiesta was here in Kyle, the music, everything, and the costumes, you know, naming the queen candidate. It was a very beautiful time in our city, and we still have it a little bit. But to really emphasize that and share it with the rest of Kyle, I think is just going to be a win for us as a city. And I think it's going to make us better as a city. Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to say that, yes, I do agree that Rebel Drive, the name, needs to change. But I do want to let the business owners along, hopefully now new Fajita Drive, that they, I do understand that it is going to cost them money to do this. Not just by going through the list that Samantha gave us, but also all of their marketing material, their letterheads, all of that is going to have to change. And I know that's going to come at a cost to the businesses. So while I appreciate that, but I do agree that the name needs to change. So I just want to kind of let the business owners know, I do understand, but it needs to change. Thank you.
This is Councilmember Tobias. Well, after left out, I would love to go and eat some fajitas. That would be another time, though, guys. Just go. But in all seriousness, I do agree with Councilwoman Shea about the financial impact of changing a address also to the residents if it has to do with their driver's license, mail, and so forth. It could cost maybe a small burden for them and the business owners. So it'd be something that we need to consider as well. Though I like the idea of the naming of possibly Fajita. I also like the idea of possibly using the name of the person who designed it and who created Mr. Falcone. Be just a consideration of Falcone Drive in that sense there and in honor of the diversity that we have here in Kyle, honoring the Hispanic culture and community that we have here in Kyle and the family that I've known for many years. And I'm sure Councilman Rizzo knows a lot of family members from the Falcone family. And so that's just my input, maybe a consideration of naming that drive after Mr. Falcone. And again, we also would need to be in consideration of the costs for the businesses and the residents.
Councilmember Tobias, it's a great point you bring up. Unfortunately, we already have Falcone Street in our city. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but I believe we have Falcone Street. And we, and the reason I know is because I drive down our city and I see the Martinez Street, you know, Falcone Street, all the different families here. And I keep thinking, there's not a Rizzo Drive anywhere in the city, and our family's been here forever. But I'm okay with that. I'm getting over it. But definitely, we do have Falcone Street already. And, you know, I give more power to all the families that have street names after their family. And I think those are really great families. I've known them my whole life. And, you know, it's, it's great that they're being honored in certain streets and certain parts of our area of Kyle, so definitely.
Plus also.
That's a great, great point.
Yeah, I would love to as well. But unfortunately, for some of our newer residents, I think it would get lost in translation and they would just think it was named after a bird, falcon. So we'd have to kind of, you know, so. So if we did name it after Mr. Falcone, I would say we'd have to use his entire name.
Well, I think we're using a name that he coined, and he came up with the name Fajita using faja to mean belt in Spanish. So I think we are naming it very much after him when we use the word fajita because that's the name that he gave the skirt steak.
I think it's, it's an object and an ideal that brings people together. And there's not going to be any, I mean, what can you say bad about Fajita at any point, right? Whether it's cultures, issues, or social issues that change throughout, you know, it's, it's, it's something that brings a lot of festive, brings a lot of more like soul food. It's a, it's a Texas staple. So I think, I think the name in and of itself brings a great amount of, of of togetherness around it. Just every time you think about it is how families get together to eat that. People break bread to get together. Of all walks of life, come down here, come to Texas, come to, come to this area to have fajitas. So I think it's good.
And I know this is all coming about because there's going to be a change in the name of Rebel Road. And I can tell you that I grew up in Kyle. I went to Hayes High School, had, I knew what it was like to have rebel pride in that school. And it was all about pride in the school. It was never about anything else for us kids growing up. It was just about pride in the school. We were, we didn't really know the outside issues or how offensive that name could be. You know, that's something that I hope that people never hold against because I know I've had conversations where people talk about, you went to Jack C. Hayes Rebels, you know? And, and I can tell you right now, it was just about our school. For us kids, it was about being prideful in our football team, our band, the school we went to. It was never about, you know, hate or anything else like that. It made me sad a little bit later on to find out that we were a part of something that other people in parts of the world, it was offensive to them. I didn't realize that it was hurtful, you know? We just didn't know because we grew up in a small community, didn't really go a lot of places. You know, we grew up a little bit poor. I'll tell you right now, we weren't very poor, but we were poor and we didn't travel a lot. So we really didn't know what it was that this name would, would do to other people in other communities until I went to a football game one time and, and saw how hurtful the name could be sometimes. And I can understand why there's a name change needed now. You know, it's, 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 it's going to be hard for some of the people that went to Jack C. Hayes Rebels because in a way it says that you were a part of something awful, but you weren't. You were, you were there for the school, you were there for your friends. And that's what you're going to remember are those memories of your friends being there, the school you grew up in. You know, the name could change, but the buildings will be there, your friend, your memories of your friends will be there. It's, it's that, we're never going to change that part of who you were growing up. We're just trying, the school, the reason the school changed was a reason, I believe, that was justified. And it was because it's hurtful for some people. And now with the Rebel Drive, I, I, I see why the change is needed. And I can tell you right now that I, I, you know, it's, it's something that growing up in Jack C. Hayes High School was never thought of. But now that, you know, we're, we're in, I would say now, the world itself and seeing what this name could do, I, I can see why it's so important to have the name change. I, I know for me, it's going to be something that I can agree with and support changing the name. And one reason is because I, I have a lot of friends who I love dearly and I just don't want anything that would be out there that would hurt them. And especially in all the communities where I have friends, amazing friends that I dearly care for and love. So I can see why we're doing this. And I know there's going to be people that are a little upset about it. But I can tell you right now that anything that's hurtful is something that needs to be changed, especially if there's a bad history with it.
I actually agree with what you're saying, Councilman Rizzo. I think that certainly this won't be something that is received by everyone the same way. I think some, some folks really like it being called Rebel Drive. And some, some may not understand the, the rich history of the fajita. But at the same time, it's really not a name change that's, that's designed to be universally accepted immediately. But I think that over time, in particular, the name change will be something that is accepted in the community. And in particular, if this council continues to carry forward in leading the conversation about our rich history with the fajita. So the more we follow through in celebrating Kyle's history in this way, I think the better folks will receive it over time. That's my hope at least. Any other comments, Councilor Ellison? You said you had something to say a little bit earlier. I hadn't heard you speak yet.
Thank you. No, I appreciate the presentation and the thoughtfulness of, you know, the impact. I think I'm going to speak to that part first. So thank you, Steve. Good to see you, by the way, Steve. Hope all is well. And certainly appreciate the, the work that was done to kind of give a full scope of what the change might look like and who that might impact. Certainly, it might be cumbersome for some. But I was, it was interesting to look at the map that you all showed and how spread out it kind of was. There was definitely some closer towards the center street part. But I think now might be the time to do it if you're going to do it to impact the fewest amount of people as well. So that, I guess that's just the point I'm trying to convey on that. As far as some of the comments were made, both by the mayor and very, very touching comments by Councilmember Rizzo just now. And thank you for sharing that story as well, Mayor Protem, about your lunch with the other council members and being educated about that. I think that's really an important piece that has kind of been brought together by a number of you all is the education piece about it. And I think as we as a people in this country, that is a melting pot of folks that look all different kinds of ways and come from all different kinds of backgrounds, being willing and open-minded enough to accept those and surround yourself and learn about other cultures and be open-minded about that, even when sometimes it may sound a little far-fetched, right, Coach? To be open and willing to, you know, see that and learn and grow from that history. And I think it was really unique to hear Councilmember Rizzo talk about being a former Hayes High School student. And, you know, the high school for many of us, especially in Texas, is a very special time for us. Whether you played sports or particularly football, or you're in the band or different things like that, or whatever it may done, it's a very sentimental time and brings a lot of memories. So I can certainly empathize with that. It shows a lot of character and something special and someone that's willing to say, even though, you know, I shared and had those special times, I'm willing to change this because I can see it hurts another community or it may make another community uncomfortable. You know, and I've said this before privately to some people, but I'll say it publicly now. You know, this city has embraced me. I, I, I love this city and I try to give back as much as I can because of how this city has embraced me and the people that have been warm and welcoming and befriended me in this city. I will say, speaking just as me, this is Dex, not speaking on behalf of any group or race or anything like that. It is something to know that your peers around you that don't look like you and may not have a shared experience of maybe a symbol or a term or things like that may make you feel when you walk around in a community, even though you love that community and that community embraces you. For your peers that don't look like you, to be willing and wanting to educate themselves and willing to make that change on behalf of your feelings and how that may make you feel. That, to me, is, is the ultimate show of love from one person to another. And that is what makes me happy to live in this community and what makes me happy to serve in this community. I am grateful and humbled to do this. And so I thank my colleagues for their open-mindedness and ability to evolve and work together. And I'm just happy to be a part of this. So thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Ellison. Any other thoughts or topics, motions?
Motion to approve.
You need to specify a street name in the motion.
Motion to approve the changing of Rebel Drive to Fajita Drive.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mayor Protem, second by Councilmember Villalobos, that we approve the ordinance changing the name Rebel Drive to Fajita Drive. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, seven to zero. All right. That, it's an ordinance. Is there any objection to this item being finally passed? Seeing none, it is finally passed. Next up, agenda item number twenty-two, discussion of possible action for the renaming of the swimming pool in Greg Clark Park. Councilor Rizzo.
Thank you, Mayor. As we expand, as our city expands, I think about the diversity we have in our city and, and how beautiful it is to have everyone represented in the city of Kyle. I, you know, I was thinking about last year when, before I got onto council, no, just as I got into council, we talked, they talked about renaming, no, it was before I got on council, sorry. Before I got on council, they renamed the historic city hall after Pete Krug. And, you know, it got me to thinking, the part there is also named after our first female mayor. And I kept, I kept wondering, you know, what other mayors have we not honored? And I thought about our first black mayor, and that was Mayor James Atkins. And I first met Mayor Atkins on the basketball court. I was out playing basketball with my sons at Greg Clark Park, and he drove up with his grandsons and they started playing basketball, and I got to know him there. It's the first time I had met the mayor. And he talked about how he was so, he was really happy to see the kids out playing in Greg Clark Park, the swimming pool, and the families coming out and utilizing this, and it really warmed his heart. And after finding that out from him, I kept thinking, thank you. Because this swimming pool had been promised to us when we were kids. When I was a kid growing up in Kyle, we had, they had promised us the swimming pool. My father actually donated money towards it to get the swimming pool, and it never happened. And Mayor Atkins had the vision, had the wherewithal and resolved to get the swimming pool built for our community, a community pool. And I really think that his blueprint on this facility for our kids and for our community was a staple in his honor. And for those of you that don't know Mayor Atkins, his tenure was from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and five. He was the mayor when we first became a homable city. And he actually created the pud, the Plum Creek Pud, and approved the streets, different things that were in that area when it was just all farmland. He advocated for the first certificates of obligation, which, that's how he was able to create the swimming pool, the new city hall. His vision here in Kyle was, was one of growth, and I think he set the stage for it. And I believe that as we're do, as honoring our diversity, we would be remiss not to honor Mayor Atkins. And what I'm proposing is to name the swimming pool that he so graciously gave to the community, worked hard to give to the community, was a Greg Clark swimming pool. And I'd like to name it after Mayor Atkins and just to play homage to the hard work he did and the love he had for the kids in our community and for all his hard work. But not only that, for our diversity, we really need to honor our diversity as a city and pay homage to all those who, all those pioneers that were there before us.
Thank you, Councilmember Rizzo.
Is that a motion?
So I was waiting on some more discussion. Any feedback before we start a motion?
This is Councilmember Tobias. Want to give my little story.
This is Councilman Tobias. Um want to give my little story with Mr. Atkins. Met him back in nineteen ninety-eight when I came and visited my parents. He was a very good friend of my parents. And um this was a good man. And we had a lot of great conversations and he had vision, what my mom and dad said about him. Uh wanted to make this city more diverse and also saw the growth that was coming and did his best to try to. Get the city where it was a small town back then to where it is now. Um. One of the fond memories that I have of Mr. Atkins is uh uh going to the pool with my kids as well and seeing him there with his grandkids. And enjoying the time that he had with them. And I would always go up there and and shake his hand, see how he's doing. He says, oh, I'm just loving it, having a great time with my kids, my grandkids, they're enjoying it. And just seeing the smile on his face and people coming up to him and saying hello to him and shaking his hand. And and just really seeing the the joys of 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 his hard work, of getting something for the community. And for the kids in the area and and Councilor Rizzo may also remember going back when we were kids. We didn't have that. We would have to wait for a a school bus at the Kyle Elementary in the summertime and hopefully we'd make it to Rio Vista Pool. And make it back in time. And then that was like once a week. Uh it was a round trip. So I can see um the last place I did see him was at the pool. I can have a recollection of that. And I can remember just seeing the joy on his face, just seeing his grandkids and seeing all the other children in the area. Uh including rocking horse driving up in their bus and having the camps and I could see that it was a it was a good time for him. And and uh I I really uh strongly uh uh recommend um. Name it the pool after Mr. Atkins. It'd be a great honor for him and his family and for the community.
So Mayor. Mayor, this time I'd like to make a motion to rename the Greg Clark Cart, Greg Clark Park Swimming Pool after Mayor Atkins.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilor Rizzo, seconded by uh Councilor Villa Lobos that we uh begin the process of renaming. Uh uh the swimming pool after Mayor Atkins. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor. Uh we have a moment.
I just wanted to uh state that um I wanted to also just put out a. A kind of a shout out or a thank you to the Greg Park uh Greg family. This was, this is in no way. You know, a negative to them. This is a way to honor one of our mayors, but we do appreciate. The uh donation of the land for the park and that uh we are keeping the name of the park itself. So um I just wanted to, as I said, put a shout out to that family as well.
Mayor, this is Councilmember Villa Lobos.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this was a. This was a long time collaboration. I know that this is something that we've had discussions on in the past and. When you look at this and you look at throughout the city, you look at, you know, the diversity here, you look at it as a quilt, right? It's a it's it's the ties that bind all the different changes and all the different things that bring Kyle together. So I think it's a it's an integral, it's a key point. It's a it's a cornerstone. For leaders like uh Mayor Atkins and his uh tenacity and his direction and his push. To get that pool there, so. Um in my mind, I see a vision of 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 faces through all the hard work, sweat and tears that they come into. Being uh a part of a community and 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 thinking of 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 something bigger than yourself and and I think that's. Indicative of Mayor Atkins and 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 what he did to get that pool there uh for the enjoyment of all people in the city of Kyle. So. Uh I appreciate this this proposal and and I think it's, I I think it's uh it's gonna be a beautiful um. Accolade to to him, but just another celebration of our diversity uh in this town. So thanks again. Uh Councilmember Rizzo for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Any uh any other comments? I I have a question for staff. Is is uh are are there any staff members on the call who are around uh when the pool was put together and the original CO bonds were issued? It may pre- predate most of us. I was thinking about a few, though. Go ahead, Diana.
I'm probably the longest running staff here and the pool had just opened when I moved here, I think.
When you were a baby, right?
Yeah, exactly. I was twelve.
There you go.
You're muted, James.
When I used to have red facial hair.
We didn't, we didn't hear the beginning of that, James.
When I used to have red facial hair.
You're you're saying you were here when that when that all went down?
No, the CO was done prior to Diana uh has worked here longer than I have and it was done prior to to her even, so. I don't think you have any staff now that are at this level anyway. We may have some, we definitely have some field employees that have been here that long.
Well, certainly a feel-good moment. Uh it seems very applicable. I assume you two agree.
Absolutely.
All right, uh it's been it's been motioned and seconded already. Is there any further discussions? Uh this item doesn't have a proposed ordinance attached to it, so I I expect that the official name change would come back probably at the next meeting. Uh so the staff could kind of prepare the logistics of what that would look like uh and bring back the bring back those comments. Uh to us as well as the uh ordinance and give us time to prepare for that. Does that sound, does that sound right, Scott?
Sounds good.
So we would be James Atkins Ball. Been through.
I believe that's correct.
Well, well, it'll it'll come back in the, uh Scott didn't come through just yet, but it'll come back in the form of an ordinance. Apologize.
Yes.
My microphone died. Yes, sir. Okay. Um uh anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries seven to zero. Uh I think you're bringing that forward, Councilman Rizzo, and for all the statements made by this this body. Couple good, good agenda items. So, okay.
There's many more to come.
With many more to come. We don't, we never, we don't disappoint on the fun items. Uh si- next up, City Manager's report.
Man, Council, uh Scott Sellers for the record. The the future land use map, otherwise known as the the FLUM or F L U M.
Scott, you're muted.
Can you not hear me?
He doesn't seem to have a working mic right now.
It it's on.
Does this mic work? Yeah.
Can you hear me now? No. Can you hear me now?
You gonna use both of them?
Can you hear me now? I don't know what to do.
Let's try this again. Can you hear me now? How about now? Kill it. Can't do it.
You you have your reverb on your uh amp, I think, because you got an echo.
Mr. Sellers, the echo was from your laptop having the mic live.
Yeah. I've tried.
It's muted now, so you should be good.
Can you hear me now?
Sorry, the sound guy in me came out.
Yeah, I thi- I think I think they canceled out the microphone in in person, it looks like.
Hello.
How about now?
I we've lost all audio.
Man, just kill the master. Volume, I'll just do it for the computer. Just kill the audio out here. Can you all hear me now? Okay, uh we've just had to to kill the the audio in the council chambers. Not sure what's going on with all the microphones. Okay, so the the here in. Land use map uh is something that. Would be basically an amendment to the twenty-ten comprehensive plan, since we're not officially updating with with a new twenty-twenty plan. Uh and as the city continues to grow, we do have areas within the Kyle city limits that we have grown into. That were not taken into account during the twenty-ten comp plan or the twenty sixteen seventeen uh update to the plan. Really, we have, we have projects at at uh, you know, one fifty and and twenty-one or or far far east of the city. Uh areas around the Bunton, Bunton Lane, uh East Bunton. And so uh those areas do not have. Zoning assigned to them. And so what this this amendment, this future land use map amendment to the comp plan uh would basically be. Looking at the areas that we've grown into, assigning appropriate zoning and bringing that back as an amendment. So the the city charter reads that a future land use map amendment can only be initiated by the Plan and Zoning Commission. Uh the city manager or the city council. And uh this is a a. Process that's usually a little more involved than your standard zoning or conditional use permit type of item. So there's there's public notices involved. Public hearings typically exhibit. Uh you know, a a larger production. Again, this isn't large scale. We're not. Writing a new section of the comprehensive plan, but we are amending the the future land use map accordingly. So uh we estimate the timeframe to to create the FLUM. Uh as two to three months roughly and it will be overseen within our planning department by our staff. Uh and so uh with that, uh we think it's a good idea to move forward. We want to let council know that it's a process that that will begin. Uh fairly quickly and see if you have any questions. And I believe Howard is still on uh if there are more technical questions than that.
Any questions?
Tra- Tracy, Councilmember Shield does have a question. I'm going to to transcribe it here.
The Planning and Zoning Commission to be a part of that as well?
So the the question is, would we consider adding a couple of members of the Plan and Zoning Commission to be part of the process? Howard, do you want to talk through what what that process will look like?
The entirety of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be involved in the process. Um it's going to be done through uh through P and Z. Uh it's not a full um, it's not a full effort, for lack of a better term, as as far as it goes through in doing the map amendment. Uh what we're gonna do is present the current situation, have some discussion about how the current situation um needs to be improved. To allow us to move forward with some of the land use decisions we'll make uh over the. I say a period of time in the future. I don't know what that period of time will be. Um and then um have a public process so folks can either confirm. Uh or give input on how they'd like to see changes before the map is adopted. And then the adoption process is uh roughly commensurate with a zoning process. Goes through a couple of reads and public hearings in front of the P and Z. They make a recommendation that later gets confirmed by the council. And then the new amendment will be uh adopted as a part of the the twenty-twenty doc- or the twenty-ten document. So um the 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 P and Z will be involved. We're gonna start this uh as early as a week from tonight. Uh next Tuesday at the council's uh regular work session for the month of August. And I will go through uh some of the process and procedures and get some feedback from them. Uh there'll be a short syllabus of the work session and maybe a Gantt chart. That shows some scheduling. Um but the the real work, I believe, will probably be in September and the first public meeting wouldn't be until at best early October.
Any questions for Howard?
Howard.
All right, I think we about got it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Scott, do we still need to go into executive session or do we get through it all?
We got through it, Mayor.
Okay. Uh anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Tobias. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries six to zero to one. See y'all.